Chang, Fontenroy, Marsh, Randolph, Shabazz, Tibbet. Council President, we have a quorum. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Well, now, I'm invoked by Reverend Letitia Milton, pastor of the Asbury United Methodist Church, Atlantic City, New Jersey.
Let us pray. Most gracious in the heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. God, we thank you for this opportunity. God, we pray that you would transform this space so that it will be done with compassion and mercy. God, we pray that communities will be transformed and that those who sit in leadership would make decisions on behalf of your people. Have your way in this day, oh God, so that this space will never be the same. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Definitely commission with D.C. and Robyn as the passment of the meeting.
Sure. No matter which mic we're in?
Shall I do the...
She... If she has to read, pre-amp when you come on.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided, as required by law, by the city clerk sending to the press in the Philadelphia Inquirer on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018, and to the Star Ledger on January 2nd, 2018, and published on January 8th, 2018. A list of the meetings for the council of the city of Atlantic City, including notice of the meetings scheduled for September 26th, 2018, at 5:00 PM in the Hank Tyner Council Chambers, Room 206, City Hall, 1301 Baccarat Boulevard. And also, a copy of said notice was posted by the city clerk on the bulletin board, main lobby, first floor, on the same date. All of the aforementioned complies with NJSA 10:4-6@SEC, known as the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meetings Law, and NJSA 40:69A-179.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Council, Council President. Governor Murphy had actually asked me to come and add something to the public record. Last Thursday, we had a press conference in town over the Richmond School where we released a report that Jim Johnson had done on the city and the plan that the state has proposed for the city. And we just wanted to add to the record that an important partner with us in this whole process has been the council led by Council President Small. So, on behalf of Governor Murphy and Commissioner of the Department of Community Affairs, Lieutenant Governor Sheila Oliver, I just wanted to express particularly our thanks to council and particularly for the leadership of Council President Small. Thank you.
What's your name?
My name is Robert Long, and the mayor, I believe, was part of the press conference and had equal billing in that event as well.
We have reports and recommendations from the mayor. Orders 23 and 24 of 2018 were signed by the mayor on August 23rd, 2018. Council President, have we any committee reports?
Shabazz.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, the Planning Development Committee met on September 12th at a regularly scheduled meeting, and we have the resolutions that appear from 493 to 537 that reflect the items that we discussed and agreed upon in committee. And I would ask my colleagues for their support of those resolutions. Some of them are grant resolutions, but I would note for the record that the grant resolutions are without cost to the city. And I would express my desire with regard to the extension of the engineering services, which is a walk-on resolution that we need to help the planning department function effectively. So, I would ask for support of that resolution. That's my report, Mr. President.
Revenue on finance. We have a few items that were inserted in revenue in the budget. The security shore, physical barrier grant, we received one or two for $175,000 each. The fee of reimbursement for bullwalk improvements to the tune of about $1.25 million is... Jerkins, anyone? I have a question. Come on. Any one of you? Where are we at on the bullwalk next year? I was told that, you know, by next holiday season, Memorial Day, that the project should be finished along Caspi Point, going around to Guardians Basin, so it'd be one...
Councilman, that question probably should be answered by Bob Preston. He is not here. I don't think he's here.
He's here.
He's under planning.
The Caspi Point project will be handled in two phases. One is the structural portion that will include the revetment in the stone. The other would be the bikeway. By May next year, the storm protection portion of it should be done. I believe on council agenda is a design by Ponziro and Associates. We're hiring them to do the bikeway and the path that will follow after. So, it'll be protected by next May, and by next fall, we should be able to begin the aesthetic portion of it.
So, we're talking next fall, not next summer season?
Not for the bikeway, no. No. We're just getting... We'll just be getting the design by the end of this year. Then, the construction documents, then we'll have to put it out to bid. But the structural portion should be done at that point.
Next fall?
Yes.
Also, on the agenda, I know there's been much talk about the city's capital improvement and revenues in the budget for capital improvements. That's something that we definitely want to be part of as a discussion in our bi-weekly meetings with the state and the mayor about, you know, because we never know that emergencies can happen. We want to be, you know, prepared. And a part of it is the energy savings plan that we've been doing already, which is known as ESIT, where the city can basically save funds on equipment use such as, you know, fire trucks or other areas that we lack in to produce the savings to the residents of Atlantic City. On the agenda, it says resolution to amend an award for professional service with Trent Disparo, Della, Municipal Defense and Bankruptcy Matters, and it's naming a law firm, McMenamin, Scottland, and Ballman as the holder of the assigned contract. Just so many of you know, you know, I've always touted that since I've been the Revenue on Finance Chair for three years, we haven't allowed any change orders. This is not a change order. These two firms are merging, so this is why you see that amendment. I didn't want anybody to, you know, see I was being inconsistent. Also, the city, speaking of, there's been much talk about our fire equipment not being up to par. We're going to approve tonight to participate in a Houston-Gaveston area council cooperative pricing system, which would allow us to get equipment for a much cheaper price. I know some of you saw the governor's press release he mentioned last year, that, I mean, excuse me, last week, that the innovative planning challenge grant, $100,000, we're entertaining that tonight. And also, on the agenda, is a flood mitigation assistance grant for $1.9 million. And that's the report for Revenue on Finance. And Councilman President, see you there, Reverend Paul.
Did anyone mention the crimeSpotty.com that was released today?
No.
Okay, so I guess there was a new... There's a public... There's one IT project. It's joint with Public Safety that can be reported out. People... Some people already saw the press release for it. It's a really neat way for people to be able to plug into. It's a national platform. And you can plug in via the website, which I pulled up now, and plug in Atlantic City within New Jersey. It's crimemapping.com. So, crimemapping.com. And I just want to acknowledge that there's months and months and months and months of work from the respective IT and public safety departments. So, kudos to you for launching the project. And hopefully, citizens will be able to look on the map, and you'll get an idea of what's happening in the span of a week, be able to coordinate that with people, hopefully enhance neighborhood watch efforts and other ways for citizens to be engaged. And that's the main update, Mr. President.
All right. Anyone else from council that would be anything to say?
Mr. President, if I can, just about 5:42 resolution. If I could say, that's about the police diversity. Police diversity inclusion at 5:42.
That's in the gym.
Oh, okay.
Council President?
I want to say something. During the rainstorm last week, we see so much flooding. I would, you know, basically, I drove around in a storm. Basically, what I'm saying, we need our strength to clean, okay? The place over by Opening Avenue all the way down to Texas Avenue, on Odd Avenue Chester, was flooded. I mean, it's unacceptable. People are walking on the street. It's dangerous. It's one of the... Maybe the city can look into it. Thank you.
Council President, one more.
I just was going to ask some... I found out, we seen that problem all over the city, and it was low tide, so it wasn't a title issue. I found out from the workers that our pump, the vacuum pump, that sucks out the drains and everything. The parts down there, it's $25,000. And they're not sure when they're going to get that piece. I would just want to know if we could find out if they're going to order that piece. Because it's only going to get worse with the trees starting to shed. And once it starts freezing, we can't have the kids walking down the street to school and stuff like that. So, wherever we got to find that $25,000, we got to just take it. You know, the people deserve at least dry streets.
So, Mr. BA, Mr. CFO, we need to find the $25,000. Do we have to do it for safety reasons?
It hasn't brought to my attention. I would certainly look to find the $25,000.
Mr. Council President, during the last rainstorm that we had, the pumping station wasn't working properly up on Rhode Island and Melrose Avenue. And during that time, I was gotten with Bob Preston, Director of Paul Jerkins, and took them to a couple of community meetings. And they wanted to get together and have collaboration where there would be proper protocols put in place for that pumping station. You know, I got a lot of calls. I really ran during that storm. We had a lot of flooding. And I really am not the professional. So, they did come to Melrose Park City Association. I had a call of certain people that wanted to be talked to. And hopefully, they'll have the proper protocol with emergency management, that their team will get together. And then, I'll have a report when I come back the next time, if you see how it goes.
And I want to give kudos to Director Jerkins. I happened to be in the area of Uptown School Complex. And I saw him out there practicing for his next career as a videographer.
Yeah.
Making sure everything was going. So, I stopped and told him, you know, "Good job. Things seem to be working." And understanding, I mean, you know, it didn't, you know, happen overnight, this problem. So, it's not going to happen as fast as we like, but we have put the necessary tools in place. And before we move the agenda ahead, and I'm going to bring this up every meeting until something is done. Once again, Atlantic and Pacific Avenue. I happened to walk to the council meeting today. And if you walk through Center City Park and around that area, all you see is people sleeping on the bus stop. You know, people can't even sit down to catch the bus. I mean, it's extremely unattractive. You know, the city needs to be ashamed of itself to allow things like that to continue to happen. We want to brag about the good summer that we had, you know, with all our casinos and the tourist numbers. But once again, we need to talk about what's going on. It's real-life quality of issue, quality of life issues in the neighborhood that everybody want to pass the buck on. And I spoke to Creedle about it. I spoke to the Chief of Police. I'm not speaking to everybody. I mean, when are we going to get... What is it going to take, one of these big national newspapers to come here and do a feature on Atlantic City and do a feature like that? Then, everybody want to react. I mean, something needs to be done. Atlantic and Pacific Avenue are a joke. And, you know, no matter how the casinos or any other tourist fashion do, listen, we get elected in the neighborhoods. And, you know, people want to get sick and tired of, you know, being inconvenienced. You can't even go to a store on Atlantic Avenue without being stopped by two or three people. The drive-through at McDonald's, you got people pan-hitting and knocking on your windows, different things like that. Like, something needs to be done. And I'm going to continue to press, put the pressure on every single meeting till something is done. We want to be world-class. We can't be world-class like that. We can't call ourselves an entertainment or a tourist destination. And when people ride in and out of Atlantic City on Atlantic and Pacific Avenue, they see that. So, you know, we got to do better. So, every meeting, I'm going to tell Councilman Randolph, every public safety meeting, bring it up until something is done. And then, if nothing isn't done at the appropriate time, we'll hold a press conference and we'll call names. Maybe that'll get things done. Thank you.
This is a regular council meeting of the City Council of Atlantic City. Before we begin, please be aware of our rules in this chamber. All persons are to be seated unless all seats are filled, in which case you may stand against the wall in orderly fashion. We are asking that all gentlemen remove their hats. All persons are to remain quiet during these proceedings. This is so that everyone is able to hear what is going on. Please turn off all cell phones or set them to silent. No one shall speak unless they are invited to do so by Council President. Shouting, interrupting, speaking out of turn, or acting disorderly in any fashion will not be tolerated, and anyone doing so will be removed from the meeting. When and if you are invited to the microphone to speak, please state your name and address. You will be allotted three minutes for comment. Please respect the time for others and end your speech within the three minutes allowed. If it is your intention to ask a question of council, you will be permitted to ask a maximum of two questions. Your questions are to be clearly stated, and after the questions are asked, you are to take your seat. The Council President will determine if the question can be answered and by whom. Finally, please understand that there will be no personal attacks or name-calling. If you do so, your time will immediately be cut short, and you may be asked to leave. We are at Resolutions of Recognition.
Yes. Mr. President, can we take 539 out of order to several people here with regard to that? I thought you were a Robert's World Schooler.
Mo, give him a check for it.
Council President, I'd like to suspend the rule to bring forth the said resolution ahead of hours.
Teamwork makes a dream. Thank you, Council. As amended, but before we go there, I'm just going to go down the line just to make sure people are here. So, you know, whoever's not here on this list, we can group them into one vote. Is anyone here from the family of former city clerk Rosemary Adams?
No.
Okay. How about the family of Linda Mooney? Recognition of Mark DeBoer. Anyone here? Recognition of Vincent Vinnie Kirkland?
I see it.
Okay. Dr. Regis is here. The donors to the family of Pam McGee Capone? Are they here? Family of Bob Durvishack? Frankie Hall Watson? And I see the family here. So, I would like to make a motion to group Resolution of Recognition 487, 488, 489, 518, 523. I have a motion.
Move it.
Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
502, you want to do separately?
Yeah, we can put 502 because...
Yeah, we... We're just one of the ones that are not here. There's nobody here for 502.
Nobody's here for 502?
No. 502 was sent to us, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll add 502. Thank you.
Okay, so... Resolutions of Recognition in the group vote will be 487, 488, 489, 502, 518, 523. And that's it? Then, we have a motion by Randolph.
Second by Shabazz.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontenroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative. So, we have Resolution 500, and this is a resolution of recognition of Vincent Vinnie Kirkland.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
Whereas Vincent Vinnie Kirkland is an employee of Atlantic Care and a dedicated community health advocate, and has energetically served the Atlantic City area. And whereas Vinnie Kirkland has been an inspiration to many in the recovery community because of his strong example of struggle and perseverance. And whereas Vinnie has successfully facilitated several community events, bringing service providers and clients together. He has strongly advocated for healthcare services for the underserved and those out of the traditional healthcare structures, and continues to be a strong voice for community health initiatives and programs. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby desires to recognize Vincent Vinnie Kirkland for his valiant efforts to improve the health needs of our community and encourages him to continue his much-needed work. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontenroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation. City is here? Vincent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is this someone?
Yes.
Wow. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Councilman Shabazz, President Small, Sporty, all councilmen, mayor. And you know what? When I came in, I'm sorry it's running late, but, you know, to hear everything you said, Council President, you know, it almost feels a shame to, like, take this right now. Because when I turn the corner to come into my parking lot, there's 60 individuals on the corner running through the plaza. You know, every day I get up, and I do want to say, you know, when I was at my lowest point and I asked God to save my life, and he did, and he took that moment, and he blessed me. And I told him I would do anything I can to repay that. And I get up every day to do my best to help the men and women of Atlantic City. I'm from Atlantic City. I was born and raised. I thank God for Atlantic Care for giving me the opportunity to do what I do. And I can just say, every morning I get up and I go to work, I do the best I can. This week alone, I think, we sent 20 people into treatment. We had a summer feeding program. We fed over 2,000 families at Atlantic Care and the Health Flex right behind us. We have fresh produce markets, the first, second, fourth of the month. Over 300 people come. But there's still so much to be done in this community. And I will, again, put myself and my agency at the request and your mercy to do anything that we can to help this community. So, please feel free to come over, to call me. Let's get together. Yes, we need to get our city back in order. We need to clean up these streets. I can't do it alone. It takes a village. I'm willing to do whatever I can. And I speak for myself, and I know I speak for Atlantic Care because I know my boss, she was here today. She probably told me something. She probably told me we need to meet, we need to talk, we need to do something better in this community. So, again, I want to thank you all for this opportunity. Councilman Shabazz, again, thank you very much for even thinking about me. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Get 539. 539, Mr. President, please. Say it again. 539, it's a family, too.
We have Resolution 501, and this is a recognition of Dr. John Regis.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
Whereas Dr. John Regis, founder of Reliance Medical Group, has been a leader in Atlantic City and Atlantic County in providing medical services to all. And whereas Dr. Regis, with over 40 years of diverse experience in obstetrics, gynecology, has a philosophy and motto that healthcare is a right. And whereas Atlantic City has a documental need for more and greater medical services, especially for the less fortunate and underserved communities. And whereas Dr. Regis was moved by the circumstances of the loss of childcare services due to the closing of a childcare facility which recently left Atlantic City, leaving many parents and children without medical services. The need for transportation and affordable pediatric services is severe in Atlantic City. And whereas Dr. Regis implemented his philosophy and motto that healthcare is a right by moving a pediatric service into Atlantic City to serve the residents. And now, therefore, be resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City desires to recognize Dr. John Regis for fulfilling the need for pediatric services in Atlantic City and wishes him continued success. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontenroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Regis. Thank you so much. Thank you. City Council President Small, mayor. I'm really honored by this award. You know, I've been here a long time and not from Atlantic City. I know some from many years. We've been through a lot together. But I must say one thing. I couldn't do this without the team or Reliance employees. We have over 150 employees and 40 providers. Because of the support of this city and the city's population has allowed Reliance to become one of the largest African-American companies in South Jersey and in the state. That would not have happened without support from you guys here and you ladies here and the citizens of this city. So, I just, again, I want to thank you so much, and I'm honored. My company's honored. You know, we've always been here for the city. We continue to do that. The new pediatric offices in Councilman's district, Ms. Kurtz in 4401 Atlantic Avenue. And that building is very interesting because we have three levels there. We have adult services on the third floor, OB-GYN on the second floor, and now pediatrics on the first floor. So, it is a total family medical center. Again, I thank you so much, and I'm looking forward to doing more for the city, more work for the brotherhood of Atlantic Care. I know Atlantic Care very well. I know its boss, Lori Hurnham, for about 25 years. So, I'm looking forward to working together because, as I said before, there's all the providers in the city and us coming together. We can provide more services and a better quality of services for citizens of Atlantic City. Thank you so much.
We have Resolution 535. This is a resolution to recognize and commend Frankie Hall Watson.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Shabazz.
Whereas the City Council of Atlantic City Whereas the City Council of Atlantic City is proud to recognize residents who strive for success and work diligently to make a positive difference throughout the community. And whereas Frankie Paul Watson of Atlantic City realized her dream as the founder of Faceless Fashion, an apparel brand that was created with the belief that one's inner self is more valuable than one's outer appearance. And whereas Faceless Fashion serves to empower and encourage individuality and the appreciation of true qualities as opposed to the mass media's portrayal of perfection. And whereas on September sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, Faceless Fashion launched its School is Cool Back to School Event as a community outreach project to engage residents and promote inner self-awareness. And whereas the School is Cool Event was very successful and provided participants with a unique empowerment forum. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Atlantic City hereby salutes Frankie Paul Watson for creating Faceless Fashion Apparel, commends her community involvement, and extends best wishes for her continued success. Cheng?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
You think about that. Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we have a presentation.
Hi, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Again, my name is Frankie Watson. I would like to thank you guys all, um, Mayor Jeff, Big Help, Marty with all the donations. Um, my School is Cool Event, it was my first annual, it was a huge success. It was, uh, we had it held at, um, Pennsylvania Avenue. My mother, that owns Images of Art Hair Salon, we did free cuts, free blowouts. We had jumpy houses, free snow cones, everything. So it was a great success, over like three hundred, three thousand people came out. So I really appreciate you recognizing me today, and hopefully you guys can come out to future events. Thank you.
And Frankie, I just wanna say that, um, you know, I've watched you, you know, come a very long way. Um, you've always had the passion, and, uh, you know, what you're doing now, you know, definitely needs to be commended. Um, you're representing our city well, you know, you're a proud product of our school system, you know, come from our neighborhoods, and, you know, it, it just gives me great joy that someone who, um, I dealt with at a younger age is now an adult and is making a big impact, uh, in the community. So it makes it look like I've done somewhat of a good job.
You know, I agree.
But, um, I just wanted to tell you that, and kudos, because you did a major event. You shut down a busy block on a Sunday, and she'll let y'all know, I don't discriminate when it comes to my Eagles, I said Frankie, I see you when the Eagles game blow off. But, um, it was a good thing, she shut down the whole Pennsylvania Avenue in between Atlantic and Pacific, and I'm just glad that everything went off without a, you know, a glitch. Because the last person that shut down a whole city block, it didn't go so well. So, uh, anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
We have resolution 539, and this is a resolution of condolence to the family of Qaid Ibn Abdurrahim Mohammed.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Move by Shabazz, second by Randolph, make it all council, all council.
It is all council as sponsored. Whereas Qaid Ibn Abdurrahim Mohammed was born on April thirteenth, nineteen eighty-nine. He grew up in Atlantic City and met in New Jersey, and graduated from Atlantic City High School. He departed his life on September twelfth, two thousand eighteen. And whereas Qaid's love for boxing started at the young age of ten, he was an unstoppable force with an outstanding amateur and professional boxing record. Undefeated, Qaid Kid Dynamite Q Conquer wasn't just a boxer. He was multi-talented, a beautiful artist, an amazing singer-songwriter, and a gentle, passionate, and fiery protector to all he loved. Whereas Qaid traveled throughout the United States and abroad in his quest to further his career in boxing to be a world champion. He also dedicated his time and talent as a member of the Atlantic City Pow, where he mentored youth in the boxing program. He was a beloved friend to all. And whereas the Council of Atlantic City desires to pay tribute to the life and legacy of Qaid Ibn Abdurrahim Mohammed, and recognizes his many significant contributions throughout the community. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby joins in the mourning of the passing of Qaid Ibn Abdurrahim Mohammed, and expresses heartfelt condolences to his family and friends. Cheng?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation. We're very sorry for your loss. We have one card, mom, one for dad.
On behalf of my son, his mother, my entire family, I would like to thank the City of Atlantic City for always being here for us from the beginning. A lot of the trips wouldn't have been made without the pa- without you guys in the Atlantic City Pow, so I'm grateful, and I really appreciate, thank you so much.
And, um, can we bring up, uh, new business item five forty-three, bring one in the dock, please? Move it. Move by Shabazz, second by Marsh, make, make that all council, too.
All council. The resolution five forty-three, new business, is a resolution to recognize the Atlantic City Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated on their seventieth anniversary. Whereas the Lynx Incorporated is one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer organizations comprised of nearly fifteen thousand professional women of color in two hundred and eighty-nine chapters located in forty-one states, the District of Columbia, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and the United Kingdom. And whereas the devoted members of the Atlantic City Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated provide more than one fourteen-hundred annual hours of community service to implement the organization's five program facets. Services to youth, the arts, national trends and services, international trends and services, and health and human services. And whereas the members of the Atlantic City Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated are linked in friendship, connected in service, and work diligently to make a positive impact in the lives of those they serve locally, nationally, and internationally through their various programs of service. And whereas on Saturday, October sixth, two thousand eighteen, the Atlantic City Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated will host a platinum celebration, seventy years of friendship and service, at Harris Resort in Atlantic City. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Atlantic City hereby recognizes and commends the officers and members of the Atlantic City Chapter of the Lynx Incorporated for their significant contributions and outstanding efforts, and extends best wishes on their special occasion of their seventieth anniversary. Cheng?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have two.
Thank you. So I'm here to bring remarks on behalf of our chapter president. My name is Yolanda Melville, I'm a member of the Lynx Incorporated. On behalf of our chapter president, Linda Brown Kidd, and our Lynx members, we thank the mayor and council for recognizing a major milestone in our organization. We are proud to serve the community, especially during these trying times. Thank you.
Before we go to, um, public remarks, we wanna bring up, uh, five forty-one, five forty-two, and five forty-five in that order. New business, bring one in the dock. May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second by Randolph, second by Marsh.
Okay, so the order was five forty, five forty-one, five forty-two, and five forty-five. Resolution five forty-one is a resolution to recognize Ernestine Simpson on the special occasion of her ninetieth birthday. Whereas Ernestine Simpson has been a resident of Atlantic City for more than eighty years. And whereas for several years, Ernestine served as the director of the Retired Service Volunteer Program, and dedicated her time, talent, and energy to assist the community through the Model Cities Program. She also participated in many other worthwhile programs and initiatives that made a positive difference in the lives of others. And whereas Ernestine was recognized as Volunteer of the Year by the State of New Jersey. And whereas on Sunday, September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, Ernestine will turn ninety years young. And whereas St. Augustine's Episcopal Church, where Ms. Simpson is a loyal, faithful, and dedicated member, will host a brunch to celebrate Ernestine's ninetieth birthday. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of Atlantic City salutes, recognizes, and commends Ernestine Simpson for her outstanding contributions to the community, and hereby designates Sunday, September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, as Ernestine Simpson Day in the City of Atlantic City in honor of her ninetieth birthday. Cheng?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Shabazz?
Yes.
Tibbet?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Nine in the affirmative, and we do have a presentation. Is she not here? You're gonna accept, Alma?
Yes. I spoke to Mrs. Simpson today. Who is? I'm Miss Alma Irene Johnson.
I thank you.
I spoke to Mrs. Simpson today. A little achy, but she's doing pretty good. She's gonna be one of the seniors who will be going with us on October the fourth to Newark, New Jersey as part of the, um, symposium on aging. And we're all in good shape. So on behalf of her, I've been knowing her, in fact, I've known her since I was a child. My mother and her were very good friends. And it really pleases me to be able to see her every once in a while and know that one day I will be ninety. So thank you on behalf of her, and I'm quite sure she'll be glad that I accepted this on behalf of her. Thank you.
We have resolution five forty-two. And this is a resolution to urge the appointing authority to adhere to the goal of improving diversity and inclusion.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Move by Shabazz, co-sponsored by Delgado, second by Randolph.
Should we make it all council?
Make it all council.
Make it all council, everybody, all council.
If, um, if my colleagues would accept a friendly amendment, I'd like to add a line in there about also adhering to the residency requirements for promotions. It's something that we had talked about previously. I tried to sponsor ordinance, was told we weren't able to. As long as we're urging the state to do the right thing with these promotions, I think that the goal would be met by placing an emphasis on people that live here, that help out in our community, that coach our teams, et cetera. We're putting Atlantic City first, it should be with these promotions as well. So if my colleagues would accept that friendly amendment?
So move, I accept it, yeah?
I accept it.
As amended.
As amended.
Very astute. Very astute.
Okay, so the motion was by Shabazz, second by, what was it?
Who was second by? Marsh.
Marsh? As amended, whereas the effective policing of communities occurs when diversity and inclusion exist in the ranks of uniformed superior officers. And whereas Atlantic City has made great strides in police-community relations because of the leadership and focus of Chief Henry White. And whereas he continued improvement of relations depends upon the belief and reality that the sectors of the population are represented in law enforcement. Whereas there exists the opportunity to promote qualified police personnel who are diverse in the Atlantic City police ranks. And whereas the City Council desires for there to be a high level of cooperation, respect, and interaction between the community and the local police department. And whereas any and all upcoming promotions should reflect the diversity of the city. And whereas the need for bilingual ranking officer still exists in Atlantic City. And you want to include, whereas you would like to abide by the residency requirement? How do, how do you want it?
Urge the state of New Jersey to strongly consider...
Strongly consider Atlantic City residents.
Strongly.
Standard, yes.
I would suggest adhere to the protocol already set.
Mr. Tucker?
So you need a consensus, what's your consensus?
Form?
Adhere to the protocol which has already been set with regard to residency in hiring.
Well, 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 the protocol that's been set, you know, under visual, it can go around there, so I'd rather put the onus on the state.
I'm gonna encourage you.
Strongly.
Strongly. We're gonna sit next to Rob Long and tell him.
Okay, Mr. Tucker?
And we're not gonna let Rick with the delegate pass either, or Jason.
Why don't we say this as, so you don't have to deal with the protocol, that we urge the state to strongly adhere to what has been the prior legislative intent of considering residency as a primary factor in hiring.
And that's in a stu- observation.
This is promotion, not promotion.
Excuse you, Mr. Tucker.
Okay, so whereas, uh, we urge the state to strongly adhere to what has been prior, I lost your...
Prior legislative intent.
Legislative intent. Regarding residency?
To consider...
To consider?
Residency as a primary factor in hiring and promotion.
Hiring and promotion.
I have a question, if you don't mind, probably a solicitor, cause the discussion of intent. We understand what we're trying to intend, uh, what we want to adhere to, but is there a written statement suggesting what the intent is? The, the council, I believe, has a prior, uh, ordinance with regard to consideration of residency. And so that's why I say when I talk about this prior legislative intent, it was always the council's intent to consider residency as a primary factor. That was, that was my understanding. You can, sir. I'm just, I'm, I'm going by what little information, cause I did request the city, our City Clerk's office to look into resolutions specific to what we're discussing now, and didn't seem to find too much, and then all of a sudden... We didn't do a, a, I thought we did a resolution, but we did not do a resolution urging this, but not an ordinance because of... Maybe we're speaking of two different things. Cause I was just referencing just this specific, so we can understand what was set in precedent. So we can adhere to whatever the precedent was.
And, and, and it was, you know, ordaining the ordinance. So, so it is on the books, it's not a resolution, it's an ordinance. Yes.
You see, there, there's a question mark.
No, no, it is, it's ordinance forty-four.
And actually, I believe, uh, I drafted it because it was a, a first, and I think it was Atlantic City first. First source. Yeah, first source. Was that also part of the handbook that was established subsequent to that discussion?
I'm not sure about handbook, I know that it was on the books as far as, you know, the intent.
Another one of discussions about that, forgive me, Council President, one of the ideas was to create the necessary paper trail to support, so there's no questions or any kind of intangibles or any kind of indiscretion that could be had because of misunderstanding. And it had to do, I know that one is first source, but the lack of some of the follow-up resources that we had to ensure that people were given opportunities across the board. So that's why, that's why I'm asking, because I, I've seen it a few times, where we say, you know, we intend to do this, and so someone else's intention may be reviewed or see that, sees it differently, and it doesn't necessarily go inside. So it's just, I like teeth in my, in my bites.
It's simply a resolution urging, an urging, it's not anything more than that. It's not forcing, it's not doing things, it's a resolution urging from the, uh, the press conference of the day, and from the day that the president says. It's simply a resolution urging, it's not anything more than that.
And just so my colleagues and, uh, you know, the public, I mean, this goes back way before, uh... the press conference, and Mr. Swan, Mr. Holt, Mr. Rick Adella, Chief White, and those guys can tell you that almost on a daily basis, you know, I've been inquiring about the process, where we are. And as I stated at the press conference publicly, and, you know, before, this isn't attack on Atlantic City Police Department, because I think the leadership of the Police Department and the Chief White and the men and women in blue know, City Council has always been extremely supportive of the Police Department. We haven't gotten in any way of any of the prior promotions, and this is just about the timing of it. We were told, and I know I can spark myself, that the lieutenants had to be made before the opening of, to coincide with the opening of Harrod Rock and, I mean, I'm sorry, Ocean. So, that way, with the increased, you know, traffic in the city, that, you know, we'll be prepared for that, and then once those lieutenants were made, we would interview for sergeants. That was supposed to happen before June twenty-eighth. It didn't happen. We're almost two days away from September twenty-eighth, and we're still in the same place. You know, meetings have been had with the upper level of the state government, you know, on this matter. So, this isn't against the Police Department, we support the Police Department, but also, you know, City Council is gonna do the right thing. And if we need to have more diversity, not only in the Police Department, but in the Fire Department as well, and we're just taking the necessary steps to do that, so.
Mr. President, if I may, I think it's important to realize, too, that we are just continuing some of the positive things that Chief White has done. I remember when Council, encouraged Councilman Chang and myself came on, we got an orientation, and the orientation said that there were several cases of alleged police misconduct and brutality, and the city was liable for hundreds of millions of dollars. But I think that we can report that because of some of the progressive policies of Chief White, that that is no longer the case. I can remember watching on television, the council meetings, and people were lined up from that microphone to the back of the room with alleged cases of police misconduct and brutality. We don't see it happening anymore, so this resolution speaks to that. The more diversity we have, because this is a very diverse city, the more cooperation and support I believe we'll have from the citizens. And I think it's important that the state hears us say that, I know that they know that, but I think it's important that the state hears from the governing body a clear, united voice that we need to have diversity in the top ranks of the Police Department. And the resolution hopefully speaks very clearly to that. And I am confident that the state, under your leadership, as far as our voice is concerned, will adhere to that.
Okay, well, I'm not finished reading it. Okay, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Atlantic City hereby urges, encourages, and recommends that the Appointing Authority be mindful of and adhere to the goal of improving diversity, inclusion when making promotions. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontlory?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
As amended, yes.
Chabaz?
As amended, yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine to the affirmative, passes as amended.
Council President, I just wanted to add something on. You know, when we hear about bilingual, I understand there's nineteen percent that's not accounted for, which I want to bring to everybody's attention. One of the largest growing communities right now is the Asians and South Asians in the City of Atlantic City. And if you look at the houses that are purchased, you see that seventy percent of the houses go, ought to be six wards, have been from South Asians and Asians. So, it's a fast-growing community in this city, the number's creeping up, it's roughly that nineteen percent. I bet you it's a lot higher since the last census, and you're seeing more of them getting on our police force, so let's not forget them. Secondly, the past twelve years, twelve years ago, when I got on council, we had a problem where you didn't see much participation in African-Americans in the Police and Fire Department. And one thing I saw from the NAACP, and I was invited to go to these classes where the Vulcans firefighters and the black police organization, I can't think of the name of that right now. And they started teaching their children in the community, they were teaching them the test, they were teaching them how to prepare to be on this. And as you see the fruits of their labor today, the numbers aren't where they should be, but the numbers are a whole lot better than what they were. And now you're seeing more and more of those young people that they've trained in those classes and helped them pass the test high enough to where they got hired, being eligible to be sergeants and lieutenants and stuff like that. So, what I say to the other communities is, is I would get together with the NAACP, the Vulcans, and the policemen that did that, and mirror their program, because promotion's not gonna solve the problem. When you have five or six people you're picking from for promotion, that's not gonna solve your problem. You have to solve the problem through getting more people of your individual groups that you support and you wanna see more of in the Police Department, so that they can grow. And then someday, you're picking from twenty, thirty, that are eligible to be sergeants and lieutenants and everything else. The problem isn't promotions, the problem is getting them into the career of public safety and doing, because if you look through the community right now, most of the Mexican community don't know a lot about it. I talk to a lot of them that are buying houses, get your children involved in public safety. If they don't, get them in the Class Two programs, and if they don't get hired from Atlantic City, once you got that certification, go to the county and get the rest of your certification, and you can go to any Police Department and work once you're, and it's a great career to get into. So, again, I say, I would talk to the NAACP, the Vulcans, and other organizations that have trained their kids, and taught them how to take the test, and taught them how to prepare to be in public safety. And that's where you're gonna solve your problem, when you get more and more of those numbers in the Police Department. It's gonna be a five-year program to get the numbers to where everybody thinks they should be to represent this city. So, it's just something that I experienced and I wanted to share with you.
Thank you. And before we go to the public, it's the last item, promise, we wanna bring on this new business ordinance. Mr. Kurtz, we have the five forty-five. I stand corrected.
We have Resolution 545, and this is a resolution to provide for historical marker to be erected in recognition of Vera King Ferris.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Move by Chabaz. I mean, excuse me, move by Randolph. Second by Chabaz.
I'd like to be a co-sponsor there, too.
All, please. Make it all council.
All council.
Absolutely.
Whereas Vera King Ferris is a native of Atlantic City and attended Atlantic City High School, graduating third in her class. And whereas Vera King Ferris attended Tuskegee Institute, graduating with a degree in Biology, and earned her master's and doctorate degrees in Zoology from the University of Massachusetts Amherst. And whereas Vera King Ferris was held administrative and teaching positions at the University of Michigan and the State University of New York at Stony Brook and Brockport. And whereas Vera King Ferris previously served as Vice President for Academic Affairs at King University. In nineteen eighty-three, Vera King Ferris was selected as President at Richard Stockton College, serving in that position until two thousand and three, as the first female African-American president of a New Jersey public college, and one of the first in the nation. And whereas, as college president, significant improvements, both capital and academic, were made under her leadership, including the construction of the Sports Center, the West Quad Health Services Building, and the Arts and Sciences Building. She also established one of the nation's first Holocaust Resource Centers and first master's program in Holocaust Studies. Whereas her work and dedication to the State of New Jersey and the Atlantic City community has been remarkable, exemplary, and worthy of recognition. She was named New Jersey Woman of the Year in nineteen ninety-two, New Jersey Policemaker of the Year in nineteen ninety-four, and received numerous honorary doctorate degrees from educational institutions. And whereas the City Council of the City of Atlantic City is tasked with the responsibility of recognizing noteworthy individuals who have made significant contributions to the history, fabric, and well-being of this city. Now therefore be it resolved that a historical marker be erected in honor of Vera King Ferris in recognition of her contributions to the State of New Jersey and the Atlantic City community. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontlory?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Absolutely, yes.
Nine to the affirmative. Okay, now Council President, you wish to bring up a new business ordinance?
Yes. President, before you do that, I had a resolution I didn't get a chance to complete, but I wanted to note for the record that the Stockton University basketball team is going to be entered in the New Jersey Hall of Fame, and our Council President was a member of that team. And I think it's a signal arm for the city. I have to admit, I have to admit that it's something that we need to recognize, and hopefully for the next meeting, Mr. President, I'll have that resolution ready. But I think it needs, the public needs to know that the Stockton University team is entered in the New Jersey Hall of Fame, and unfortunately, we have to recognize that you were a member. I mean, fortunately.
We already went to that banquet, you know that, right?
This is the Hall of Fame, this is something.
Well, look, I'm not gonna let y'all power. That two years ago, I was fortunate enough to be elected as an individual player in the Hall of Fame, and my team from my junior year, which held the best record in school history until two thousand and nine, is going into the Hall of Fame Friday night, so I'm honored. But more importantly, I represented Atlantic City.
Do we have to go ahead?
That's your choice. You had a choice to go before, you know? Tickets are forty-two dollars next time. But we're not gonna bore y'all with no resolution. If they wanna do it in the future, I'm fine with that, but we'll move on to the city's business.
Okay, would you like to do the ordinance's persuading in order then?
Yes.
Or you wanna bring up ten B first?
No, I wanna bring this one.
Ten B? Okay, so this is a new business ordinance authorizing an agreement with an urban renewal entity to be formed by Elliott House Affordable Urban Renewal LP for payment in lieu of taxes pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon twenty-one et cetera.
Can we make that all council, Mr. President?
Yes. All council may not feel like that about the third one.
I think they do, Mr. President.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Move by Randolph, second by Chabaz. You can make it all council.
All council?
We can get a second by, by, so it died.
Okay, Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Fontlory?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine to the affirmative, ordinance ten B.
Council President? Yes. I'd like to add with regards to what we just moved on, I think this is a long time coming for them to get the assistance they need to get the repairs in their building, to the facility itself. The elderly that live there have to endure quite a bit, and I am very appreciative that they're finally gonna get an opportunity to get some of these issues addressed. However, as we move on forward, as we continue to give credits slash opportunities for people to stem away from taxes, and with this development and the ongoing encroachment of casinos, the state, state involvement and what have you, I'm leery that this, more of the burden will be placed on the district outside of the casino district, and also the college district, the university district. And in doing so, a lot more people are gonna feel the burden. And I'm just, I'm paying attention to that stuff, and it's really difficult for us to continue to do that, and we have to try to see what we can do to help sometimes.
Well, this was a rare instance where they were paying more in the pilot than they would've been paying the taxes.
No, 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 just like I said, this is not, this is just, this is not specific to this, because they need it, definitely need it. But I'm talking about outside of the area. It seems like every meeting or every other meeting, we're saying, okay, you don't have to pay taxes, and payment of the taxes, it may look good.
And then, and then councilmen, and look, I get your point, but the calculations and the mathematics when it comes to the pilot, the city actually gets like ninety-five percent of the money. So, in some instances, it's, you know, it's a good, it's a good deal to get a pilot, especially if you're spurring development, new development, you know, things like that, you know, when when. But your point is well-taken and memorialized in the world.
I understand what you're saying, but, you know, to use an idea, if you have people scourging to try to eat from the crumbs on the table, more and more people are gonna be aggressive and trying to attack to get those crumbs. And I use the example of how the pilot, the city pilot went in, and all of a sudden, we had the county coming to attack us to try to get what they considered was reasonable to them, and everyone else seemed to jump onto it. So, we're still in a ravenous state, in my opinion. And we just have to be really cognizant that our collateral damages in the residency of the small businesses in the area. That's all I'm saying.
Cool.
We're now at Public Portion, Good and Welfare. Charles Goodman?
Yes. Thank you. Before you start, my time, I'm just wanting to welcome Mr. Long to Atlantic City, and it's not by accident that you are here at this time. This is my personal field, and I appreciate you being here. Now, I had notes for today, as you know, I always prepare my notes, but with all that's been said, I had to correct some of this real quick. On the police, the residency, thank Mr. Marsh for correcting it. What you said had no teeth to it at all. And I do get a little upset when all of a sudden now, you say a residency, when you didn't say a residency before, when the deputy chiefs got promoted, when the captains got promoted. Now you're gonna put something. And anyway, I'm not a lawyer, but I know anything you say, if it did have teeth, would be going forward, not for now. So, let's deal with the promotions and urge the state to push that forward. Also, my good friend, Mr. Chabaz, yes, the money's paid out from police brutality has lessened, but it has not been done away with. So, that's a correction on that. And that's also why we need minority officers in our communities to protect those situations that come about, that we're a little more sensitive of our own. But let's, the city pays out too much money for police brutality. My good friend, Mr. Tivitts, love you, bro, but it's the deal. The problem is promotions right now, right now, today, not tomorrow, not five years from now. It is today. And we look at this community, the Coalition for a Better AC, looks for this community, Black, Hispanic, Asian, the minority community of this community, okay, of Atlantic City. And to be honestly fair, in the coalition, the white people are seventeen percent, so that's the minority of this community also. But right now, we're looking for promotions for those that are minorities, the Black, Hispanic, and Asian communities, to happen. And we've been working on this since April, and it has not happened. So, with the press conference. The other thing, Creta, I'm no fan of Creta, but I see where you've asked Creta to spend money in the Renaissance Center. Well, I hope they would spend money to get the liquor store out of there, that would be the first thing. And until you change what happens in there, and the people that visit it are not for commercial reasons, but to hang out reasons, you putting, as they say, perfume on the pig. So, why waste that particular money at all? So, we covered the pumping station, and I, too, am tired of hearing about Atlantic and Pacific Avenue. When are we gonna put something together, infrastructure-wise, to make it so that that particular element who has to go somewhere is moved out? Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. President, just for the record, because people are watching and listening, with regard to the police brutality cases, I hear you, Mr. Goodman, this is not really a response to you, this is a clarification of my remarks, the spending on police brutality cases has went down in actual dollars. Most of the cases that we are seeing that we have to pay out now have occurred before, and because of the legal process, they are coming to court now, and we are paying whatever we're paying. But my point was that since Chief White has taken over and instituted progressive policies, there has not been cases instituted for police brutality. Things that have happened in the past has to go through the legal process, and whatever that process comes up with, we have to deal with. But my point was that those cases in actual dollars have went down, actual cases has went down, and the fact that people are not lined up as they used to be in... down, and the fact that people are not lined up as they used to be in city, in the city council complaining about the conduct of police, alleged conduct of police, means that we made progress. So, that, that was my point, if I didn't clarify it, I apologize, but that, that was my point. The cases that are coming up now are cases, and you can check it out, you can Google, it is all public record, the cases that are coming up now in court are cases that allegedly occurred many years ago before the tenure of Chief White. That was my point, that's the point I tried to make.
Cheryl Tibbey?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Gillum, good evening, uh, city council, president council, good evening, Atlantic City residents as well. I'm here just to say that I believe we are a God-believing, God-fearing community, uh, in various religions, and I'm here to say there's two very stories that I'd just like to mention quickly. The first one is that ten people were healed in the Bible and only one came back to say thank you. And I used to live next door to Vinnie Kirkland and so I know he was the first one that, uh, come back and say thanks. But I'm here as well as a, a person that served the community on the street and different people for over thirty years. I've developed, in the second story, I wanted to say, mention, uh, the Bible story, it, it says, unless a grain of wheat falls to the ground and die, it remains just a grain. But once it, it dies, then it can bear fruit for all. So, I'm here to say, in a sense, I'm here to say thank you, in another sense, I'm here to say I died to myself to benefit the city of Atlantic City. And how, you know, the, the projects and initiatives that I've, uh, put together to benefit Atlantic City, for example, the Horace Rehabilitation Farm and, uh, plus, it's a place out of the city, but it's on a hundred and thirteen acres and it's well-known, anybody that deals with drug abuse or anything like that, people, places and things are big, uh, uh, problems. And as long as you remain in the place where you can easily access drugs, it doesn't matter how many rehabs you have locally, is, if there's drugs down the street or around the corner, you can still get them. So, it's, it's, uh, one of the things I'm proposing and also because this is a God-fearing city, I made an offer to purchase Trump Plaza, to make it a house of prayer for all nations. That means that you could be Muslim, you could be Jewish, you could be a non-believer, you could be Baptist, you could be Christian or Methodist or Episcopal or any religion. But, you know, I, I believe that, you know, Atlantic City deserves to have an icon, place that represents God in, in our hearts and minds and, and our hearts and feelings toward God. And, uh, several other initiatives, I did talk to Mr. Preston after the meeting and, uh, he said to meet with Marty Small and also Mr. Shabazz. So, I would like to put on record, I would like to set up a meeting with you two to benefit the city. And I'm just trying to give back what the city gave me.
Thank you.
Okay. Joseph Hinkle?
Good evening, President. Good evening, council. And good evening, residents. You know, the weather's been pretty funny lately, it's been changing a lot and I made up my mind, I'm gonna change and go back to like I did when I was in Wildwood. We had a club in Wildwood where we almost ran Wildwood. The Mary gave us what we wanted and what we needed, but you know something? We talk about diversity, I'm gonna start off with the police department, the body department and the school. You talking about diversity, where? Let me tell you something, do you realize that many years ago in nineteen fifty-four, when they started busing kids to school, they bused the black kids over to the white school and then after that, they brought them back to the neighborhood, right? Okay. Why didn't they bus some of the white kids to the black neighborhood and some of the teachers to the black neighborhood? They didn't do this to the point, the Caucasians are still segregated, they segregate a bunch of people and, and the blacks are still segregated within the segregation of white folks. And I got a book coming out, which will explain it like, like it really is. But if we stop and think, when you can walk down the street and pass a white person, they don't even know you exist. You know, it's like, where, where am I? Where am I going? You know what I'm saying? I, I'm not speaking because of my age and I got older, but I'm gonna tell you just like it is, and that is for real. We got to wake up because diversity is what's needed. It's needed definitely in the schools, because now you got, if you took the black kids and mixed them up in most of the white schools, most of the black kids will be much smarter because they know their IQ is lower. But you got to mix them with intelligent people, but you can't have all whites over here and all blacks over here and special blacks who keep coping with the whites because you didn't bring us up that way. You all trained us, you all taught us. So, you, you gotta be for real. And for once in a lifetime, I'm gonna be for real, I'm going back to like I did when I was in Wildwood. I started politics as a kid, ma, with major, and went into Wildwood, now over here, it's the only place I ever came to where I found out that it was hard dealing with people. I created a club here and you know, the only place I had a club that didn't want to exist? Everybody shooting, run away from each other. We all need to get together, white, black, Jewish, whatever we are, because if we don't, it's gonna be hell.
Sarah Rowe?
Hi, uh, good evening, uh, I'm Sarah Rowe, I actually wrote down some stuff so I kinda stay on point. Uh, I'm a resident in the sixth ward in Chelsea Heights and I love my neighborhood, I think it's great. There is a couple of things that I did wanna bring to your attention to hopefully, um, get you guys to kinda look at and address. Uh, the first would be that I live across from the school and it's a great place to live, but there's some issues with the parking, especially when it comes to the pickup and drop-off times. Specifically, um, aside from people blocking the driveways and parking on private property, they park four across the street and actually make the whole road shut down and it's a standstill. So, with that, I think that, you know, it's not just my opinion, talked to some of the other residents and the neighbors, it's a safety issue for the fact that if we can't get down there or there's an emergency on the block, um, where the school's let out, that the first responders wouldn't be able to get through. Uh, the other thing that has kind of come up is there's been times when the people that are stuck in traffic will get into verbal arguments and it would be terrible if that were to, you know, escalate into something physical. Um, the other thing is when they park four across and block the entire roadway, there's, you know, parents with small children, there's parents with, you know, the, the older kids, they have to navigate through all those cars and it would be, you know, a horrible accident if somebody, you know, got hit because cars didn't see them or they stepped out, vice versa. So, I had tried to talk to the school, they know there's an issue, it's something that's bigger than them, so we had kind of reached out locally to our councilmen, we reached out to the police department, we've seen officers there in the last couple of days and the response has been great, so I really did wanna thank them for coming out. Aside from that, I think that it would be something, if you guys could look into maybe help, um, maybe get the police department more involved with, it would be great just to kinda get something permanent going on with the school, so it's not something that the parents fall back into doing once the officers, you know, they, they stop coming around. Uh, other than that, there's, in June, somebody had run into the fence at the soccer field, uh, at the five hundred block of Annapolis, and it's a beautiful field, it was just redone, everything was brand-new. This is June, the fence has still yet to be fixed, so if we could kinda get it fixed sooner than later, it would be much appreciated. But other than that, thank you for all you guys do.
One question for you.
Yes.
Have you been to the Board of Education as well?
I have not, um, I was actually going for direction for this because I've talked to the principal, he knows there's a problem, he kind of, you know, spit-balled and kicked around some ideas to kinda get involved with the police and the stuff on the street. Um, it would be a little bit outside the realm, the stuff that he said he's done, he can only be in one place, the teachers can only be one place at one time, so if they're out on Annapolis side, people are doing it on Dover side, if they're on Dover side, they're doing it on Annapolis side, so.
I think, I think you came to the right place.
Okay.
I think you seconded that, no pun intended.
I, I agree, I just, I'm looking for, you know, direction and I appreciate it, so thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh, council president, I'd like to applaud, uh, Ms. Rowe, um, and acknowledge that, um, she, she did reach out, a couple of other parents did too, but it's just, you know, effective example how one person can bring concern and it gets some impact. Um, and for Deputy Chief, um, Barnhart who's here, I wanna thank you, um, 'cause Chief White passed it along to the Deputy Chief, um, their request, and he jumped right on it with operations and I think while it's definitely progress, um, there's still a need for a more visible sustained presence, at least for like, let's say, a couple of weeks to change the culture, 'cause it's a culture of human nature of people cutting corners and, you know, speeding a little faster than they should and ducking around, so that's on the police side. And then if Mr. Preston's here, um, just to reiterate these requests that have been done on the phone and email, um, the, it would be nice to have signage that would support this new culture change at this school and possibly some type of curb cut, so, you know, whatever we could do concerted, and I'm sure that it's not relegated to Chelsea Heights, I'm sure this is happening at other schools, not to pick on anybody, but, um, to the extent that we can work as a team, it would be great so that way Ms. Rowe and the other people that are sending their kids to school have a safer, more calm, more protected area. Thank you.
Dave Davis?
Mayor? City council, Mr. Small. Uh, one month ago, I came up here and where we were talking about, uh, the sound on speakers being too high on the boardwalk. I'm, I'm here to tell you that, that, uh, what? Gets in the way. But I'd like to tell you that somebody took action on that. Uh, we had the meeting on Wednesday and, uh, Friday night I went over there and it had been turned down. Then I went back next night, it was back up, went back Sunday, it was turned down again. So, somebody here took really quick action and I just wanted to tell you thanks. The, uh, situation is this, uh, I'm wearing this badge because I've been here a hundred and forty days today, it's my anniversary, a hundred and forty day, and, uh, I'm leaving, uh, and I'm going to go to the west coast of Mexico to Mazatlan and I wanna write a story about my impressions of, uh, Atlantic City this summer. Uh, I'm a correspondent. I'm a correspondent and, uh, my specialty is travel humor. I like to write funny. But, uh, what I'd like to do tonight is, uh, before I leave, I would like to see if I can get, get with the Lieutenant Governor, Secretary of State and the state's, uh, uh, Director of Tourism. What I'd like to do in while I'm in Mexico is, uh, see if we can promote Atlantic City on an international level, because folks, I've been around the world seven and a half times and you people here have a real gem in your hands. And, uh, I sat on the boardwalk all summer and watched what I call the Meat Parade, which is the parade of people, and I was looking at all the different nationalities. And, uh, uh, let's see, how much time do I have left? Uh, let's see here, hmm, let me see, okay, how do I look? Folks, I put on every chicken feather I had tonight to do this. But, uh, again, Mr. Small, when I was here last time, uh, I was watching you watch me and I was asking myself, uh... I do that a lot. A lot of you probably have seen me walking around town wearing various military, uh, uniforms, uh, and, uh, I like to watch folks watch me and, uh, but I wanna, I wanna thank you again, sir, because I don't know who in this organization or, or in this level here took such quick action on the speakers, 'cause I got here May ten and, uh, the little children walking down the boardwalk holding their fingers in their ears and, uh, people sitting there trying to hold a conversation underneath those signs and, uh, all of a sudden they could and there was a big, there was a big change on the boardwalk. And let me see, what else there is? I guess that's it. Uh, I thank you for providing, oh, oh, this is the best summer I've had since nineteen sixty-eight. Fifty years, right here in your city. Mayor, thank you very much.
And I just wanted to let you know that I was watching you because I've really seen the passion that you had, you know, for turning the volume down, so I took it upon myself and I worked every other day, so when the volume was down, that was my work. I did that first.
You got it, you got it. You the man. Thank you. Just thanking you.
Stephen Young?
Councilor Mayor, how you doing? Um, first I wanna talk about something that happened dearly to this community and it was a sense of prevention at the time. I got a call around August the twenty-sixth about a young man that wanted to turn himself in. This young man had committed murder in Gloucester Count, uh, County in Paulsboro. He had killed a twenty-year-old young man and he was twenty-one years old. He was on the run and the FBI, the US Marshals, the police department and every county was looking for him. I got a call and he wanted to turn himself in, so I went to see this young man and I didn't know at the time what really had happened, but because he wanted to turn himself in, I brought him to the police department. And that's when I found out he was wanted from all of these law enforcement. Now, I say that because the press and the media didn't put all of that out, the good things. This young man wanted to turn himself in mainly because he didn't wanna hurt nobody else in the communities, as well as he didn't wanna harm himself anymore. So, you know, if it was someone else, it probably would've been, uh, uh, a street name after him or a reward, recognition, but I guess it because it was me, that didn't happen. But I didn't do it for that. I did it 'cause it's the right thing to do. And that, and a question was asked by, um, Gilbert, Lieutenant Gilbert, who, who's actually the chief of staff working with the prosecutors also, actually called and thanked me for that, as well as the county prosecutor, that said, basically, why do you think he turned himself in? And basically, he, he was basically saying to himself, he was tired and he was, he didn't wanna hurt anybody else. And that's a sense of remorse that he actually had within himself and he has to deal with that. But, uh, I'm here for, on behalf of the, the end of the National Action Network, because in Atlantic City, you cannot be born here anymore, but there's not a maternity ward and you know we don't have a cemetery here, so you can't be buried here. There's not many places in the world that has that. You have Resolution three oh six, or MOD, Memorandum of Understanding with Atlantic Care. I suggest that we talk to them about bringing that maternity ward here, back here. That's one of the things that was in the report about the maternity rate and the poverty rate of our young people. That may have a lot to do with it, taking away the maternity ward with these young people and people that have children have to go offshore to see about their children and their birth certificates say Summers Point and Galloway when they've been living here and go to school here. Something's wrong with that picture. I think we have the opportunity to correct that and we need to do that. The other thing about public safety, um, the one, you know, I used to be the one bringing all these people here to talk about maternal affairs, to talk about complaints, because it's the only place we actually had a voice. I know that wasn't three months. And I just wanna conclude with, with saying, on the website, this report, there's anywhere you can put it on there, is, uh, very important to Atlantic City and, uh, I'll leave it as that. Thank you.
Uh, council president, in, in response to one of the points, um, which is a fantastic point about the lack of a maternity, um, division at the hospital, um, I think that that was a really telling part of the report and, you know, and one, one solution is what was suggested, to bring it back, but we could also do what other towns do and it would actually elevate our quality of life and just add, encourage our healthcare providers to add a birthing center. I mean, they don't necessarily need to be attached to the hospital, you can have it as a backup. And I get that Atlantic Care made the business decision to move the maternity wing offshore, uh, but I think that by looking at it a little bit differently and bringing a birthing center, of which there isn't any really in this area, it would give us a competitive edge and it would help address what is just an atrocious, um, infant mortality rate and there's just too much death and distress involved with what should be a joyous point in somebody's life and that is giving birth, passing on the gift of life and, you know, we should really get with the times as a city. get with the times as a city and look into bringing a birthing center to town. So, you know, but thank you for bringing that up.
Sunny Ireland?
It was a team effort.
Sean Riordan?
Evening, Councilman Mayor. I'd like to introduce myself, I've watched you guys plenty of times on the live streams and whatnot, and I've met a few select of you, but I came here from Boca Raton, Florida in the year 2016. I wasn't on your guys' tax rolls in 2015, I paid a hundred thousand in taxes in 2017. That shows the type of dedication that I put in at 27-years-old to the city. I hear all the problems that we have going on. Council President, the one thing that you said resonates with me, and something that I've been trying to, you know, jump on top of, which is Atlantic, Pacific Ave, the people that we have out there, it is just from somebody who's not even from here, who sees this place through a tourist eyes, boy, it's, it's really disappointing. And it comes down to, I've met with all the different functioning groups in this city, we've got a problem with police, there's not enough of them, they're understaffed, you know, it's just the truth. There's 16, 18 guys patrolling the city, there should be 38, 48 of them. I heard you mention about the 25,000 to get that pump fixed. Somehow, we got to get it going, that we can get more police on our streets to clean this up. You know, this city is, it's just too big, and there's too many people here for the little amount of police presence we have. Jumping into something else, one thing I've noticed is that I don't think people are all fond of CREDA, I'm not, from a small business guy and in the private sector, they're extremely difficult to work with in trying to clean neighborhoods up and try to promote positive growth in the areas like that I am working in, which are the Texas beach blocks along Pacific Ave, Texas Ave that is. But, you know, one of the things that we can do here at the city is we have to have stronger code enforcement on our property owners. I'm noticing that other property owners that are in my neighborhood, they are used to this old mentality of a low-level tenant maybe, and just doing just enough to get by, and unfortunately, that's not good enough for what we're trying to do here in this city. We've got to jump down these people's throats, we have to find them, and we have to follow up on that, and I've heard that that's a broken process within the city, that these property owners get fines, but it's not followed up on, they're not required to come to court, and a lot of these out-of-town landlords, they need to have to make that trip here a few times and catch a few fines to actually get them to up the bar of their properties. And those people we talk about on Pacific Ave and Atlantic Ave, they're staying in those properties. They're staying in these chopped-up row homes and stuff like that. So, in conclusion, I'd like if somehow we could get together as a city and focus on our end of it. I know we got to work with CREDA, I know it's a, it's a complex situation, but no, there's guys like me out here who also want this to happen, you know, and they're here to support you guys in that whole process. It's, I was in Miami in an area called Wynwood, that was an awful area that is now changed to a vibrant arts district, and what happened there was a public and private partnership, and I'm all for that. So, thank you guys very much.
And, point, point well taken, and as far as, excuse me, the police and the lack of manpower, I mean, that's a item that the Council Committee of the Administrative and Governmental Affairs took to CRDA. We would like to, you know, see them take on more full-time police officers, and that way we can replenish the Class II fleet, I think is very important. And as far as issues, you know, just common cleaning issues or any other issues in your area of business, one of the things that the report, you know, said that things should be streamlined, there's no way that you should have to go to CRDA to get one approval and come back to the city, and then, you know, there's a lack of communication, and that's one thing that our monthly meeting with CRDA, we want to kind of close that gap, you know, we should be talking to each other, we should be communicating more. And one of the good things is, it was stated the goal is to bring, you know, everything back to the city, as far as, you know, the planning department, because I see Mr. Cowan, who is a guru, when it comes to the zoning and planning board, I might have just got you some more money, but, you know, he's been around a long time, and I'm sure that he can say, Mr. Jordan, longtime zoning board member, that's one thing that the city has always done well with zoning and planning. Everything needs to come through these buildings, so that way, we know what's going on, because it's unfair, some of the zoning board members didn't even know what was going on with Hard Rock and Ocean, but they represent Atlantic City on the zoning board. So, we're trying to take the necessary steps and, you know, and hope you play a part in the future of making Atlantic City better, and thank you for your investment.
Joyce Mallo.
You sure she left?
Yanira Echavaria?
Good evening, how you doing? I'm here in regards of my five-year-old, she's been registered to school, they want me to put her in New York Avenue School, but with personal reasons that I have with them, I don't want my daughter to go New York Avenue School. I'm not allowed, allegedly, I'm not allowed with a board education, I don't know.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I spoke to you today.
Yes, but I still need somebody to understand and to hear that, my daughter needs to be in school.
No, I understand that, listen, and I, I understand, and we had a nice conversation.
I called you, I called his office, I called his office, I called his office, nobody had gotten back with me.
I, I talked to you.
No, you spoke to me, yes, yes.
No, well, what I wanted to tell you is, this is the wrong place, this is City Council.
Okay, so I need somebody to help me get to the board education, they not listening to me, they don't want me in there.
Listen, and I get that, and we had a conversation, I don't want to get too much into it, but I said the reason that they're probably not talking to you, and I know that you're saying it's not, it's your other kid as far as the lawsuit, but a lot of times, even up here, like say if you were suing the city, he would tell us not to answer any questions, so.
Okay, so in the meantime, between time, my five-year-old needs to stay out of school, right? She can't go to school?
I didn't, I didn't say that. I think it's a Board of Education meeting tonight, and I told you, I said it's a meeting.
No, it's not. The next Board of Education meeting is October 13, or, no, 19, I apologize.
Okay, yes, but that is the place that I suggested that you address the concerns in front of the full board. I know you said the superintendent doesn't want to talk to you, but.
How does that work out? I'm a resident from Atlantic City, and my kids go to the public school. How does that play out, sir?
I get you, but what I'm, what I'm telling you, and I shared this with you on the phone, and believe me, I'm not passing buck, you know what I mean, I like to work and help people, and, you know, these gentlemen up here, but we can't make a decision, you know, on your behalf, we're not the Atlantic City Board of Education. It's two separate governing bodies, and I know a lot of things that happen in the city they want to lay at the feet of City Council, but not everything City Council has to do with the Board of Education has their own board, like we sit there, they have their own meetings, and listen, I truly understand your frustration, and, you know, I would want to help, and I suggested that you go to the Board of Education meeting and help, and I'm sure if it's a lawsuit, you might have an attorney, I would suggest that you consult with your attorney.
At the end of the day, that don't have nothing to do with my five-year-old, my five-year-old needs to be in school, I should be able to put my daughter, or somebody should be able to allow my daughter to go to MOK or Pennsylvania Avenue School, it's still in Midtown, it's still in the same thing.
No, I understand that, but what I'm trying to tell you, I understand your frustrations.
No, it's impossible.
No, no, I, I do, I have children, but what I'm, what I'm telling you, like I said, and I talked to you, I called you back.
I understand that, I respect that, thank you, I appreciate that.
No problem, but what, I'm trying to help you, and what I'm saying is, we'll gladly listen to you, but we can't make a decision for the Atlantic City Board of Education. And I don't want to put us in a position where you think we're just telling you something just to hear you out, we're not going to operate like that. If, if we want to tell you something, we can help, we're going to do it, but, you know, it can't happen here, so the next board meeting is.
It's, I bet you it's going to be the same thing.
No, but you will address the Board of Education, they can't stop you from speaking.
I did this before, this is deja vu all over again.
Across the street, on the sixth floor, you should be in front of the board?
Yes, and when I get to the board to go speak to the superintendent, excuse me ma'am, you're not allowed to speak to the superintendent, wait, what? I am a parent of a person, of my kids that go to public school, it's impossible for y'all to keep shutting me out.
No, no, but as my attorney was in my ear saying that, you know, you have to address the public, it's not.
Oh, I will, I will be going further with this, because now I'm ready to go to the public, ready to go to the press, I'm ready to go extra with it.
The press is right there.
I have the educational number for Diana, I think Diana, if I'm not mistaken, Diane?
No, she's not there anymore, she, she works for staff.
I called him, I left the message, I'm tired, this is over and over again, all of y'all got my number, I don't got in contact with y'all. In the meantime, between time, take me the phone, because my daughter still needs to be in school. New York Avenue School is not the school. They're linked.
Okay.
They're not professional, the staff member is too much. I have videos, and I will shut this whole city down, I'm tired of people not listening to me, and my daughter needs to be in school, she's five-years-old, she needs to be in school.
All right, can I, can I ask you a question? I, I listened to you today, right?
Yes.
Yeah, but what I'm saying.
But what am I supposed to do if I'm not allowed to be in a board education? The police department is going to get called to me, and what's going to happen?
But all I'm saying to you is this, we can't make a decision for your daughter, they can across the street, and I would suggest that you go to that next meeting and state your case in front of the full board, no one can stop you from speaking.
And it's not, I will be there tomorrow as well, I'll be there tomorrow.
All right, you too, God bless you.
Beth Court?
My name is Beth Court, I'm here tonight representing the New Jersey Tree Foundation. For those of you who are unfamiliar with us, we're a nonprofit that works statewide to plant trees in urban communities. We're celebrating 20 years this year, we've been working in New Jersey since 1998. And a few months ago, the Tree Foundation applied for a TD Tree Day's grant through the Arbor Day Foundation to plant trees in Atlantic City. Fortunately, we were awarded this grant, and we've been working with the Shade Tree Committee of Atlantic City and Mr. Preston for the past few months to plan this event. It will be on October 16th, we're planting 45 trees at the Uptown Complex Park. These are large trees, they'll be over 10 feet tall at the time of planting, so they'll make a significant impact in the park and provide shade around the walking path and the bleacher area and some of the places that will really help people to enjoy the park more. So, I wanted to tell City Council about this event. We have spoken to the mayor's office, the mayor will be in attendance that day. We also have cooperation from the Atlantic City Fire Department, they will be sending out an engine and a ladder truck to help water the trees when the planting is over. And I've met with Principal Davis, and Bob Green has helped me with that. The principal is getting the children involved from the school as well, the kindergartners will be making art about trees and presenting that during the welcome ceremony, and the fifth graders will help to water the trees after the planting is over. So, I, again, just wanted to tell you about this event, it represents a $16,000 in-kind donation to the city, and the volunteer, the volunteers that are helping also represents another, it's over $6,000 worth of in-kind volunteer work, and it will be all local TD Bank volunteers, we have about 80 people signed up to volunteer for the day. So, if Bob would like to say anything too about?
Thank you. The Atlantic City Shade Tree Committee, we meet once a month. We're all volunteers, we're supposed to always be relevant to tree issues, and for time's sake, we have one, two members here, out of about seven or eight, five are very consistent with these trees, 40, how many?
Forty-five.
Forty-five trees. My concern is that once these trees are planted, that they are well-maintained by the city at the Uptown School Park. We'll speak later, thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny X?
Good afternoon, Council, Mayor, I wanted to read off my phone real quick, speaking for these restaurants, Knife and Fork, Angeloni's, Back Bay, myself, Wonder Bar, Vagabond, Angelo's, Irish Pub, Bungalow, Baltimore Grill, Back Bay, AC Bar and Grill, and others I may have forgotten. With respects to the Stockton College applying for the concession or concierge liquor license, all of us feel it's irrelevant and not a smart thing. From what I understand, you have to be 500 feet or a thousand away from a school in order to operate a place of business that sells alcohol. Seems kind of contradictory if the school's selling it themselves. All of us are more than capable of catering an event, which we have proven in the past five or six years with the beach concerts and with Bader Field, well over thousands of people. Obviously, we all specialize in different foods, from high-class to regular American cuisine. We're asking collectively that that gets tabled, and it will be up to us to be a preferred vendor of Stockton, or for Stockton, other than having an outside Asbury Park entity come into Atlantic City and, you know, benefit off of us, you know, for the past five years through the hardships that we've gone through with, you know, low tourism, this year obviously growing, and the cost of business going up. So, collectively, we plead that whatever connections you have, that that gets tabled, and they put us on a preferred vendors list and allow us to go and cater to facilities, and I can speak for everybody that I mentioned in the, in Kelsey City, I forgot as well, though. We're all more than capable to handle whatever party they have or event at the new Stockton facility. We welcome them, but just once we get back to the community, that's just taking away from us, and that person should have known that prior signing a contract to vend on that property over there, at least give us a shot for us to do it. Thank you very much for your time.
And this is just a question for the city. My understanding, and I was away all last week, but my understanding is, in that Fannie Lou Hamer Event Center, like if it's a private event, if someone's having a party in that center, that by state law, they're allowed to cater beer and wine, am I correct? Anybody from the state, anybody?
We've catered events to where you can do alcohol as well, it's a matter of the person who's having the party, I bust up a Stockton, it's been full beer, wine, liquor, more beer wine.
Is there like the permit that you go to the city clerk's office, state?
Yeah, it's just a matter of personal preference.
And I heard that there was, I heard there was a meeting yesterday, and there was a lot of opposition, did anyone know who that, the police at?
ABC Chambers right behind me, we met here at 3:30 yesterday, it was Angels Ramon Tavern, myself, Vagabond, Wonder Bar, I forgot Mark Colazo.
And I heard from a non-bar owner, someone that lives in the enclave, that it was a lot of, you know, opposition, so is this a decision to y'all's that, well, obviously it was the ABC Board that we, we will meet?
Council President, that was a meeting that had occurred that we weren't aware of, but now it's brought to our attention, that is something that we will most certainly put a postponement on. I think that what the businesses have basically been expressing in terms of making sure against Stockton and anyone else, basically who puts a footprint in the city should be utilizing local entities. Unbeknownst to us, we did not realize that there was an ABC meeting being held, and that's something that we'll basically make sure that we get our grips on in terms of having boards meet without the administration being aware of, for the public. But it's, however, because these things come up, and it's brought to our attention that the community has basically spoke, we should listen to their concerns before making a final decision.
Well, and I know that part of the school's mission, particularly in Atlantic City campus, was civic and community engagement, and.
And I'm, I'm an alum of Stockton, but, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm for the people of Atlantic City. Well, Speedy said I'm a Hall of Famer too. But, you know, I'm for the people of Atlantic City, and the businesses of Atlantic City who help pay our taxes and are a fabric of this community. So, as I say, that was going on last weekend, I literally just heard about this this morning from a resident of Yonclee who attended that meeting. And, you know, we'll take the necessary steps to get an audience with Stockton, and definitely, you know, have a serious discussion about, about it going forward. Yes?
Council President, just to let you know, our board doesn't have a say in that. It's a state issue, and they're looking to extend their state concessionaire license. So, you know, we can support not doing it, but we need to get on it right away, because it's not something that we can stop. We have to stop it through getting the state not to issue that extension of the concierge license.
Well, Mr. Long, and don't mean to put you on the spot, but under, you know, misread, the state has wide-ranging powers over boards, authorities, veto power over minutes, which includes the ABC Board. If that's, if that's something that, you know, the good people of Atlantic City and this elected leadership wants to put in place and say like local, you know, catering companies who have access to that, is that something that the state of New Jersey can and will support?
Obviously, this is a issue that will probably have two sides. I'm hearing it now for the first time as well, so let's get the details. Obviously, we try to represent the interest of the governing body.
All right, well, can I ask you to make that an agenda item in our next bi-weekly meeting, which I believe is the... Thank you. So it'll be on our agenda, and, you know, we'll talk about it in, you know, the next council meeting or before we'll come out, what our findings were, where we go from there.
Council President, I think that that's something that you and I, we have a consensus right now in the public, that that's something that we'll support in making sure local vendors have the first rights of those opportunities.
Yeah, but I'm, but I'm just saying, for the sake of that meeting, he said there's two sides to the story, so I'm sure that they want to get Stockton inside of the story, so that way we can come out and know, you know, all the facts, because you didn't know, I didn't know, I don't know if anybody up here knew, even though it was a regularly scheduled meeting, but I just heard about it this morning. So, we'll get to the bottom of it.
It just happened quick, so it's not, this is just informative for you guys. It was something that has been known, this all came up yesterday, all within one day. So it's not like, a little fresh.
All right.
Council President, to add one thing, there's another, I don't see in here, but there was another business owner that's also affected a similar line of work. And I spoke with him and another small business yesterday, because it was the first I had heard about it. And I think it's important, the gentleman mentioned one aspect of the issue, but the other issue that's been raised by some of these other business people, Mr. Long, is that Stockton has a potential client that would rent out the front of the dormitory on the boardwalk, and it would be potentially a brew pub, if the rumors are to be believed about what's happening. And so the issue would be not just about this concessioneer's license, but that an entity would come in as a bar and bypass the process that every other local entity has to pay, you know, locals have to pay a certain market value for their license, and that this entity through a preferred partnership, through not just Stockton, but the Devco, Chartwell's Food Service, that they would somehow be able to bypass the expense and the time that our local people are able to. And I think that with all due respect, Mr. Mayor and Council President, that could be part of your agenda items too, is that we don't want a brew pub to be able to compete with our local brew pubs on a whole separate set of privileged rules that are cheaper and less red tape. Everybody should be playing by the same script, paying market rates, and applying by the same rules.
Anyone else from the public, wish to speak? Public portion is closed. You said two seconds?
It sounded three. I'll try to make it two seconds. Two things, first of all, on the resolution earlier, which you, Mayor and I wrote, Stockton alumni honoring Dr. Ferris. The only suggestion I'm going to add is, instead of having Vera King-Ferris, have Dr. Vera King-Ferris, because if he didn't know she were a doctor, you're not going to know it without seeing it on there, and it should be recognized. Same thing with MLK Bullard, it shouldn't be Dr. MLK Bullard for the same reason. I had the same conversation with Mayor Tweedle in Pleasantville about eight months ago. So I really hope that you'll reconsider the change, the amended resolution to start with Dr. Vera King-Ferris. Second suggestion is the fact that Stockton has the Osprey Card. And what we ought to do is encourage Stockton to work with local businesses so that students can have access to local businesses using your Stockton Osprey Card for meals, so that way the business can benefit if they want to walk to, sorry, I mentioned Januzzies, which was not mentioned as one of the places, but it could be Januzzies, Tony's, whatever. And that way they can go to other places to have their meals, as opposed to being forced to go and only being able to use Chartwell for their, for their meals. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, as a point of information, fantastic idea. And Osprey Card, actually, Mr. Matt, is being used in some local establishment. There is an option for locals to participate in that. And if anybody's like not aware of that, they should contact Stockton. I don't know the exact content, contact there, because it is a good local business, small business tool. But it's fantastic ideas tonight.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, on behalf of the House, we'd like to thank you for your support tonight. Not only is the community buyer coming in and pouring money into the project, but just important, we have 104 units, 20 of them are Section 8. They were able to secure 60 additional Section 8 units. So that's going to cover from 20 out of 104 to 80 out of 104, which means a lot of senior citizens who couldn't afford market rent will be able to live.
And you named the record, please?
Huh?
You named the record, please? Thank you.
And Godfather, I'm going to tell you this, you got to get it passed second reading, so we'll be doing some negotiating in the meantime, in between time.
That means I have to tell him how great he is and what a great pro- not the caterer he is when it comes to the...
Thank you, appreciate it.
Don't people do anything bad?
At least be being transparent. Anyone else from the public like to speak? Seeing none, public portion is closed, let's move the agenda.
Your ordinance is on second and final reading. We have ordinance number 25, which is an ordinance to restrict the location of medicinal marijuana distribution facilities in Atlantic City.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Randolph, second by Chang. Anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing none, public portion is closed, discussion closed.
Just like to add to it, I really appreciate, I told my colleague that I was extremely proud of his movement, his actions, not only in the position of council, but also in the position of the NAACP moving so quickly to address an issue that impacts the community the way it is. I'm, I'm in full support of it. I think the option of having a dispensary is not lost as far as the city is concerned, but as we're in the atmosphere of not in my backyard type deal, I think we need to consider or suggest that if we're going to have a type of business in the city, let's make sure that the, all the backyards are wide open to the same option. As we're talking about equity and equality, no one should be grandfathered away, no one should be protected outside of the residence.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz? Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in affirmative. We have ordinance 26, which is an ordinance to provide for an additional name designation of the corner of Indiana and Baltic Avenues to be known as Robin Salam Way.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Randolph, second by Marsh. Anyone from the public like to speak? I see the families here. Did I have any co-sponsor on that too?
Co-sponsor, Randolph.
Are you, we'll call that. After the vote. Any discussion from councilmen? Seeing none, call the vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in affirmative?
Families here.
My name is Danee McQueen, actually, Danee Murray, prior to becoming McQueen. And just on behalf of our family, we would like to say thank you. My Aunt Robin was a teacher for Chelsea Junior High School for many years, and she really loved the students of Atlantic City and their families as well. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nadia Ruffin, and I was Robin Salam's niece, and I just want to say thank you.
Excuse me. Don't you ever... It's all good.
For the record, Councilman Chabaz would like to add an affirmative vote, making this nine affirmative.
And you missed another one. You missed number 25.
I missed 25, who missed 25?
Distinl marijuana distribution.
Was that what?
Yeah, you should respond.
It's long. I'd like to remove Councilman Small, no. He who laughs last, lasts best.
Are you changing your vote, adding a vote to this guy's?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
An affirmative vote on ordinance 25 makes it not a affirmative.
Yes.
We have ordinance 27, this is an ordinance to vacate portions of Trenton Avenue.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Chabaz.
Second.
Second by Chang. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, public portion is closed. Discussion from councilmen, seeing none, call the vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy? Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's eight in affirmative?
May I have a motion, a group ordinance is on first reading, regular resolutions. New business bring on in the dock, so move. Anything else? Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. We're going to start off with Tivitt. He has nothing like Whitney Houston. Chang's good. Randolph? Marsh?
I have to do one abstention. As much as I'd like to have nothing tonight. Yeah, I, I have to abstain from resolution 546. I will refrain from any co-sponsoring. I have respect to the Cowboys, to me, the Eagles.
I'm all right. Okay, Delgado? Well, Mr. President, one, I'd just like to co-sponsor with you the 537 for the Economic Development Grant. Ain't going to be none of that. Oh, ain't going to be none of that. No electioneering in this chamber. This is policy.
All right, we're good?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be voting on ordinance 10A, this is authorizing an execution of a lease agreement for the Energy Savings Agreement Program. 493, resolution 504, 505, 514, 515, 516, 517, 519, 526, 532, 533, 537 as amended, 490, 494, 495, 496, 497, 498, 499, 503, 512, 513, 520, 521, 522, 524, 534, 536, 538, 540, 486, 491, 492, 525, 527, 528, 529, 506, 508, 531, and under new business, 275, which is forensic site for an agreement, $35,000. Resolution 544, an extension of major consulting for an interim engineer through November 23rd of this year. And 546 is a resolution to extinguish the reversionary interest held by the city for block 94, blocks 35 and 77. Resolution 509 is a change order for Ozitis. Change order number four, $83,333.33. Resolution 547, change order number one. This is approving grants for the Dec Bond Community, $49,900. 548, insertion of item into the budget. FEMA reimbursements for the fire station emergency generators, $68,200. And 549 is an award of contract environmental resolutions for professional engineering services, $68,200. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Montleroy? Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
That's nine in the affirmative, and the exceptions are, I'm sorry, eight in affirmative, and the exceptions are abstaining, Councilman Kurtz, resolution 546, and co-sponsored, Chabaz, resolution 537. We now have executive session.
May I have a motion?
Move it.
Moved by Randolph, second by Chang.
Sorry, I misunderstood, that was... Motion was Randolph, Chang? We have, 507 has been amended. There is one item, it's A, Stefanic versus City of Atlantic City, it's a civil action. The other item has been removed. Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Yes.
Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
No.
Okay. Seven in the affirmative and one in the negative. How long, please?
Eleven minutes.
Okay, eleven minutes. About 9.5.
Council President, we're back on the record. We have one remaining resolution settlement after executive session. Resolution 510 will be pulled as it won't be needed. And that was B. McDaniel. We have resolution 511, and this is Stefanic versus the City of Atlantic City.
A motion?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Randolph, second by Chabaz. Call the vote.
Chang?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Kurtz?
Abstained.
Abstained. Marsh?
Yes.
Randolph?
Yes.
Chabaz?
Yes.
Tivitt?
Yes.
And Small?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Seven in the affirmative, one abstention.
Move it.